I'd like to call our meeting in Greensburg City Council order and invite you to join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Krista?
Father, thank you for our new week and new month as it gives us wisdom to go forward, that you give us grace to make the decisions that need to be made. And Lord, I just ask for there to be a unity and just a pleasure that comes for serving and walking out the woods. You show us this best. Give your wisdom to council, give your wisdom to those that are here speaking and sharing their feelings and their thoughts. And Lord, may we close at all at the end of the night, knowing that we've done the best we can and you have it all in your hands. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Krista. All council members are present and we have a quorum. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, sorry, didn't have a...
No.
Um, I request that we add an executive session for term of complaint prior to Agenda Item 4F.
Any other additions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We forward a document to council concerning a letter of support for a grant process. The letter of support, so the Agenda Item would be 4J. Consider a letter of support for the advanced manufacturing jobs and innovation accelerator challenge grant. This is a grant that we received, grant opportunity that we received consent for innovation for inclusion in this grant process.
Are there any other additions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the two additions. So we've been moving seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Council member reports? Ed, comments?
Yes, I just have one thing to talk about, just to make council aware that this past week I've been in contact with Mr. Dennis Pauley, entering some discussion with him about updating the lease for the Iowa County Gathering. So just giving council a heads up, in coming weeks we'll be bringing you a lease document for the Iowa County Gathering. And that's all.
Questions or comments for the administrator? Before we have our public comment section, we'd like to welcome everybody tonight. Thank you for coming and being part of the city council meeting. We appreciate it. Public comment section of our meeting for anyone that would like to address the council. Just not on the agenda. If there are none, then we'll move to our consent agenda, which is the council meeting minutes of June 18th, 2012, and appropriations ordinance 1883.
I believe that's for the cleaning chemicals and for the wash station at Public Works building. In that particular question, I've visited with Mike and Mick both about that cleaning system. They don't believe that we use it as effectively as it was designed to be used. Just the low number of washings that are used for that particular station. There could be some interest from Mike and Mick for maybe putting that washing station up for sale and we can realize a good refund on that system since we're not using it to its full capability. So that could be another item in the future that we will discuss as well.
Other questions?
I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. As we move into our business items, first item of business, Jeremy.
I'd like to appeal to the city, the city vote. Three dwellings, Wisconsin. It's already done. We're trying to apply to the city manager.
Questions, council?
Is your letter sent out to the individual that owns the property?
Yes, the city sent, staff sent a letter to Mr. Stephen Schmidt advising him that the lot was out of compliance in accordance with the city code. The letter was dated April 17th this year.
So Jeremy, you just, you just, you work, you work with Mr. Schmidt on mowing this? You work with Mr. Schmidt on mowing this on what, a contract basis or what?
No, no, Schmidt is not on it.
He's what?
His power won't even sign.
But his name is not on the deed?
It's not registered to deed.
Okay. Did you get an answer to your letter yet that you sent out?
No, we didn't.
Apparently the letter was mailed April 18th. And it was returned based on Selena's notes. It looks like it was returned May 4th. Returned not having been signed for by Mr. Schmidt. Our city weed policy requires that we send a registered piece of mail to the property owner. If, if the letter's not accepted by that property owner, it's still considered as having been served.
And when you say property owner, it's the property owner of record as registered as the county register of deeds, correct?
That's correct. Our only recourse unless we have personal knowledge of a particular property is to check with the staff at the county courthouse and find out who the registered owner of the properties, the record owner or owner of record. In this case, Mr. Schmidt is the, is the owner of record for this particular address. With a check of the courthouse records as of today, it still shows that Mr. Stephen Schmidt was the property owner, the owner of record, and that hasn't changed since 1980. Staff had no way, I guess, knowing that it had been sold to Mr. Powell. We have to check with the courthouse records and that's what happened to show that Mr. Schmidt was the owner of record. So therefore that's who we send the mail to.
So technically, Mr. Schmidt still owns the property as far as the deed goes?
Yes, that's correct.
And the letter was returned to us, the certified letter was returned to us? And then someone came in and paid the fine?
Well, the city, after we mailed the notice of the weed violation to the owner, we hope it's signed for, and they received that notice and then they can follow through and mow it or cause the property to be mowed by someone else. They didn't sign for that piece of registered mail notifying them that their property was out of, out of compliance. So the city mows, in this particular case, the city mowed the grass and the bill for that mowing was dated May 31st.
Do we know when the city mowed?
I believe it was mowed on May 31st. And we, it's, in speaking with, with staff, they attempt to do these bills and get them mailed out as soon as possible after the mowing occurred. So that's our best, that's our best control of when the mowing was. Actually, I'm sorry, I'm looking on here, let me clarify that. The original bill is dated May 31st, but the invoice actually contains the mowing date that Selena puts in there and it says for mowing, April 30th, 2012. So it was mailed, mowed the day prior. And then in keeping with the office staff procedures, they try to get that bill out as quickly as possible. In this case, it was invoiced the day after the mowing.
Ed, how do we, how do we correct a situation like this where we have an owner like this that won't accept the letters or pick them up, but yet has somebody like Jeremy that takes care of it? But we don't know it?
There is a provision for that in the ordinance here.
But we don't know it? We don't know that he, he has made arrangements for Jeremy to take care of it? So we send letters to the supposed property owner? And if he doesn't get, take the letter, then he doesn't notice anything to Jeremy?
The only way to do that is to maybe mail, and our ordinance does require this, but maybe mail a separate first-class envelope that they may take. If they're hesitant to open or to receive registered mail, maybe they'll go ahead and receive the first-class mail. It's an extra step, it's extra postage, it's required. Drives up the cost of attempting to manage the weed notice process in our city. But it's certainly a way, we could take extra steps to try to ask questions, but we're limited on staff time to be able to do that. We have an ordinance that's written that says if they're not in compliance, we need to send them a registered piece of mail. And we have that extra expense, for example, the $5.75 for registered to be able to remove doubts that we made every attempt to contact the registered owner. We have the receipt from the registered mail notices that will help us to do that. We need the registered mail process to be able to show that we've made every attempt to contact that owner. We don't have any idea of what their current phone number is, or we don't know who their relatives are. This is a system that we have to rely on. I would hope that we would take those extra steps if we happen to have knowledge of whose relative this is. Can I call them and say, can you get the word to them? But we're limited on, especially in my position, I don't have that historical knowledge of who's lived here and how long and who their relatives are. This is an effective system. If they chose not to receive their registered mail, that hinders that process.
I understand that. Thank you.
I will point out that apparently they did sign for the mail that they received the bill for. This is very poor quality copy, but it looks like the bill was mailed after it was prepared, May 31st. It was actually mailed to May 31st. And they signed for the registered mail on June the 11th. So they signed for that piece, but they didn't sign for the original weed notice. And I'm not suggesting that they signed, they failed to sign the first one now despite, they may have been on vacation and maybe there's a postal regulation that says we only sit on this stuff for two weeks. I don't know. I'm not suggesting that they just maliciously failed to sign for their mail to receive that notice. I have no idea. I'm just saying merely that it was returned.
Wasn't the problem that it was sent to the wrong person? It was sent to the prior owner?
Um, I think there was a-
It's addressed to Mr. Schmidt.
Both pieces of mail were addressed to the same person, the same address.
That's the way I read it.
So if Mr. Powell owns the property, how did he get the, how did he get the notice?
How did he get the bill?
There's a separate piece of property that Mr. Powell owns that also was in violation to receive the weed notice. Which was quite confusing when I was working with Jeremy to figure out the correct weed.
I still think you're missing the point here.
How, what, when did you mow it, Jeremy?
Ed mowed it 19th of April.
Oh, the 10th of April?
19th.
Oh, the 19th.
19th of April and the city mowed it the-
Approximately two weeks before the city did. It was not out of compliance and the city mowed. That's the issue.
Wait, the city mowed it on May 30th, correct, Ed? Looks like, from invoice?
Yes, the mowing from May 30th.
And you mowed it April 19th?
You mowed it April 19th.
So that's five weeks.
Yeah. How much rain we got since the 1st of the year? How much rain did we get last year? Ain't nothing wrong.
I can't attest to how fast grass grows, but Mr. Butler's saying he mowed it on the 18th and we mowed it on the 30th, 12 days later.
We're talking different-
I'm sorry, a month and a half.
Yeah.
A month and a half. I would think that, I can't attest to how fast grass grows. But that's a much longer timeframe with some rain during the time.
Well, and that's the thing is, I mean, I'm sure you did mow it April 19th. But by the same token, you know, when Mike or his crews mowed it the end of May, I have every confidence that it was, very well could have been out of compliance at that point.
Jeremy, you say something?
I got mowed the weed yesterday. It still wasn't out of compliance. It was not out of compliance.
Ed, I'm a little confused here on one piece of, on one item that you sent in our packet concerning this. It was the invoice for the 312 East Wisconsin to Mr. Schmidt. It's stamp paid and then it's crossed out and it says it was paid in cash by Mr. Butler and that Jeremy came back to get the $375 on the June 4th.
The lot-
Can you explain that?
Lot next door, owned by Stephen Glaucon, Ed mows it also. The notice was that it's sent in, out, and sent out at the same time for both lots. He mowed both lots at the same time and then the city mowed both lots at the same time.
I'm not understanding how that happened.
I'm not either. I'm still not understanding.
I made, I made him get his money back from my lot. I didn't want him to pay for it. My money.
Okay.
Because I wanted to appeal because it didn't need money.
Okay. Okay, that explains that to me then. Thank you.
Jeremy, why are you here appealing it as opposed to Mr. Powell?
Because I own the lot now.
Because you own the lot now.
So it's really my fault because it's a field mine back.
But it's still deeded to Mr. Schmidt?
No, I'm not. We have since taken care of it. Mr. Schmidt is not working again. He's gone.
But has, has the deed been filed with the register of deeds? Anytime, anytime from Schmidt to Powell to Butler?
No, not yet.
We're just trying to get a timeline.
I might suggest that a lot of time goes by between now and next summer and Public Works forgets that we had this hearing and aired this out. If they forget that you own the property, then they may cut it again and Mr. Schmidt will receive the bill.
The deed will be registered as well.
And thank you. That would clear things up a little bit and help on that process for registered mail. I think if I may, in the packet is an actual copy of the weed notice section of our code. And I may ask our city attorney to, to provide comment, to kind of clarify what I, the way I'm reading this. Mr. Butler and I, Mr. Jeremy Butler and I spoke about this. And as I pointed out to council, the section that's on page 8-19, it's section 8-403C, the final paragraph before you get to 404. "If there is a change in the record owner of title to property subsequent to the giving of notice pursuant to this subsection, the city may not cover any costs or levy an assessment for the costs incurred by the cutting or destruction of weeds on such property unless the new record owner of title to such property has provided notice as required by this article." In reading that initially, that, I think, I'm not an attorney, but in reading that initially, I thought, oh my goodness, we're charging people and they don't own it anymore, you know? It's a new one. To clarify this, I think I would ask the city attorney to clarify the way that I'm thinking about this. In order to collect on weed cutting or mowing fees, if the property has changed hands, it's incumbent upon us to determine if there is a new record owner for that property and then we may not collect the fee from them until we provide them this, the original weed notice saying, hey, your property is out of compliance. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it would imply anything that's excessive taxes or whatever. That we're even busy. I think that's gotta take care of it.
Where?
Because if it's excessive taxes, that's, that's a barrier for the time anybody buys the property. They should check title and they would know that that's there and they'd make the prior owner take care of it. But if it's in process or something happened between the early part of April and the end of May, that that change of title happened, then they wouldn't have any way of knowing about that. And so you wouldn't, they wouldn't be bound by having that notice process. That's the way I would read it.
Jeremy, I just have a curious question. Then who paid the taxes on this last year on 312 East Wisconsin?
Denton.
Denton, okay. Did he get the tax notice or did Schmidt get it and give it to Denton?
He had to ask them.
Okay, okay. See where I'm coming from though? I'm just saying, I think you've got conflicting data that-
The topic is the usability. The topic is that it didn't even mow it. It's not out of compliance.
Counsel?
Your, your same notice, Mayor, says that you're only required to send that certified out for certified another house per gallon of weed. So if there's a letter that goes out in the spring and the owner mows it and it grows again, you don't have to send another letter out. You can go with it at any time.
At any time that it's out of compliance.
Correct.
Not just, you can't go over there.
Whenever you feel like it, perhaps if it's like that. Or you need another extra 375.
Ed, how many letters were sent out that week? Can you tell me that?
I don't have that information in front of me.
I have it.
How many?
A lot.
A lot.
A lot?
No, I was just curious. I just wanted a number.
Approximately the time that Mr. Butler was requesting these records, I think we were in excess of 100 lots that we had sent out letters on. Most of those properties were taken care of, so I don't have an exact number. But for that season, there had been over 100, close to 120 letters that had been sent out with only 20 or so that, that Public Works had to go down. So most of the property owners received their letter and took care of cutting their own weeds. The system worked for most of them. As to the key question that I think I hear Mr. Butler asking, why did the city cut it if it wasn't out of compliance? We have a Public Works director, Mr. Mike Hayes. It's his job to recognize when things are out of compliance and address them. We've tasked him with doing that as part of his job description. So this really comes down to questioning a city employee's ability to recognize that a yard or a lot is out of compliance. And I'm not prepared to, to address that at this time. I believe Mr. Hayes is doing a very good job. He wouldn't just pick additional lots to mow because the city needed the funding. His task of yards and lots to cut is quite large. And many of those lots are the same properties that he cuts every year. I think he has the ability from experience to be able to say, this lot is out of compliance and, and this one's not. Since this time, Mr. Hayes has changed his processes. He's designed an additional tool that helps him obtain photographic evidence when a lot is out of compliance. Therefore removing any doubt as to whether it's subjective or whether it's his own personal opinion. So we are beginning that process and it makes him quite uncomfortable to have his integrity questioned when I don't believe that Mr. Hayes would go cut lots willy-nilly just to gain revenue for the city.
91 sent that day, Mark?
Do what?
91 certified letters that that day were mailed.
Okay, thank you.
91, Jeremy?
Yep.
91.
To, to, to the regulations that I have seen.
Anything else to add, Jeremy or council? Questions?
The only thing I can say about it, Jeremy, is I understand where you're coming from. If you or the owner that's on the deed would have got the letter, he could have contacted you, or if you would have got it, you probably would have went and mowed it, right? To take care of it, heck with this, whether he needed mowed or not.
Yes, definitely mowed it.
Sure, sure. But the city not knowing who the owner was, except for knowing that Mr. Schmidt's the only one, because nobody's ever filed a deed on it after they bought it, and he didn't pick up the letter, so that where does that leave us? I mean, and we didn't know that you guys were taking care of it.
There's still these same issues that it did not even mow.
Well, but we didn't know that you were taking care of it, or somebody might have talked to you about it, or talked to your dad, so.
Talking about being in compliance?
Maybe, maybe seeing where you was gonna take care of it, whether you had a schedule for mowing it or whatever, you know? Maybe your opinion of needing it mowed and somebody else's is different. It's hard to say.
It's four inches. It's right in the middle.
Okay.
It was not even four inches at that time.
What I'm saying is I can see where Ed's coming from, not knowing who the owner was.
Oh, I understand that.
You know, that's why I was asking a while ago, if we knew that somebody owned the property, didn't live in town, but they had somebody like yourself or your dad to take care of it, then they would contact then.
The bill still ended up in the right place.
Well, except, yeah.
Well, I also see Ed's point that absolutely, I trust city staff, Mike and his crews. They're familiar enough, they've been doing this for several years. I would trust their judgment and if they believed it needed mowed, it was out of compliance, I would trust them. You're absolutely right. That's, that's really the point of contention. And our, our problem, which we've since come up with a method to kind of get around this, is documentation. At the time, May 30th, you know, you, property owners, have the opinion that it's in compliance or did not need it mowed. City staff thought it was out of compliance and went ahead and mowed it. Problem is, we don't have hard evidence one way or the other. But I'm kind of the same, I agree with Ed in that, you know, we have city employees. We trust our, you know, trust their judgment. We've entrusted them with these duties. So I'm inclined to, to trust city staff on this.
You don't trust Dad?
No, I mean, I, I think it's just tough to say because, you know, chances are, I mean, that's, I can't remember the state of my lawn two days ago, let alone two months ago.
Jeremy, I think we need to clarify here. It is not required that grass be 12 inches beyond compliance. That creates a presumption that it's that high it is out of compliance. But there are other tests that you look at as to whether or not it's freedom of life effect of the area. It's not just that one. It changes big hoover. I mean, hate to imagine that every lawn in the city in the region would be 12 inches tall. I mean, you couldn't do anything about it. That's, that's just one of the tests. If it's 12 inches and clearly it's out, but if it's below that, there are other things you can read in section 8. you can read in section eight four oh two and say, this is still creating issue. So I mean, I don't know.
If you, if you would do that.
It's not just one test, what?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna stick by that ordinance to the fullest, there's not a yard in town in compliance, I promise you.
That, that may be, I don't know.
Well, flower gardens, ninety percent of those seeds are weeds of a downy or winged nature.
A tree under an inch and a half in diameter.
And there's no provisions for any of that.
Well, I don't have any order of this work. So I'm not going to make ways of pushing it further.
So what would be some of the evidence that the judge or law might be?
If you had, if you had a lawn full of non-vegetable vine weed, even if you're mowing it short every time, if you get some nice flowers, like flowers next day, it would be out of compliance. If you had a lawn with, with old cedar trees, that were less than an inch and a half, that clearly weren't planted, were growing like weeds. They might get one of the city's property, you know, that the city's, the city property stole the vine weed itself and they don't treat it. That, that may be. Did they, did they clean their, the vine weed off their mower before they mowed my lot, that the vine weed created?
This says, if I'm reading it right, that this ordinance that you presented to us was in two thousand and seven?
This is the code of two thousand and seven.
Was that prior to May fourth or after May fourth of two thousand and seven?
Prior.
It was prior to that? The, okay, I'm just trying to get a timeframe of who the city attorney was and, or knowledge.
It's, it's based on the statute of KSC twelve dash sixteen.
Okay.
Seventeen, which has been around for years. Every city bases their ordinance on law.
So this didn't happen after the tornado?
Right. This, this is where the deed.
I mean, knee-jerk.
Repotify.
Pardon?
You re-proified everything after the tornado, you have written this.
Any questions, counsel? I'm acting on, or on Jeremy's request. Comments, discussion?
I said, do we return the money?
That's what you, the council needs to determine by whatever.
Say that again.
Say it louder.
I said, do we return the money?
The money was returned, was it? The money was returned, was it?
It was returned.
Yes, this, this mowing bill is still outstanding.
This mowing?
This particular lot, the money, we refund it to you as a couple of months.
Okay. Okay.
So basically our decision is whether or not to reinstate those fees or let the rebate stand, or the reimbursement stand?
Well, it was a reimbursement, only because they require or requested that we refund the money to not give them credit for having paid this, so therefore the bill for the mowing is still outstanding.
At three twelve east Wisconsin?
That's correct.
Okay. Just so we get it. Keep the waters from getting muddied.
And the bill that you're returning taxes?
No, I believe so.
Well, I think that's where, I think that's where eight four oh three C, it says, you have new owners. So I'm not sure if this bill can interest in new owners.
But as that section says, an owner of record, there is no new owner of record, which requires us to notice that new owner of record, and that doesn't happen.
As you investigate further, the question I'd have for Jeremy is, those quick claim deeds, when are they dated? Prior to the, to the mowing of May thirtieth of two thousand and twelve?
Most, most before, most after, if that matters. I would still rather that kept that on the, there was not out of compliance issue
Well, we, we don't really have any way of knowing that because we didn't look at it. And I agree with Ed, we do have to trust our employees that are running around mowing lawns that don't need to be mowed. Of course, we do trust recs here too. Should we re?
We need to redo the waters bad. I mean, we're, we're touting ourselves as a green community. We've got all these different vegetation we're growing, stuff like that, and some of them aren't designed to be mowed, two and a half inches tall, over five bays. And a drought, especially a drought, anytime, the taller you can mow grass, the better because you have less weed germinator. Grass by nature doesn't get very tall. You can train the pasture, the weedy pasture, it will get grass. Counsel, to, it, I'm just going to weigh in on something. If you choose to honor Jeremy's request to waive the mowing fees, I think it should be on section C because of the record of the change of property. I understand what you're saying, Jeremy, but it's kind of he said, he said deal. And I, that's a choosing upsides deal, and we have no physical evidence on either side.
Oh, yeah.
Pictures, documentation, dates, everything. But anyway, it would be on that change of ownership in my opinion.
Well, if we waive, if we waive the, the fee, that difference doesn't make which?
Well, that's true. You waive, you waive your fee, you take this ordinance and put it in the trash and let the town grow up in weeds. And you don't have to mess with this no more.
No, that's not what I said.
But that's what it's going to come down to, because you won't, one, one thing will start another and it'll be a domino effect on the whole thing. There's no, there is no sense in having an ordinance if you're not going to go by it and whether it needed mowed or not, if, if you don't go by the rules that we made, that, if we don't go by the rules that we made, then they're, they're not rules.
I would make the suggestion that we get the property legally in line. Let's get the deed filed so we know who the property owner is. I mean, technically, if another weed, if a letter went out, it has to go to Mr. Schmidt. So, and we could revisit this at that time.
Because technically, if we let the fine stand, it's still Mr. Schmidt's responsibility because he is the property owner of record until the, until those deeds file and clear at the registered deeds office.
And if, if they bring in and report the deed, so you can keep it filed, then the city can take care of it administratively, because then it's just a matter of forcing your code. You just say, okay, you're not responsible, we're not going to send you that, because it'd be a wrong sense of the estimate. And if the bill still ended up in the right, I still have the right.
I understand.
But not the weed notice?
What?
But not the weed notice?
I know the weed notice.
You did get, received the weed notice?
Yeah.
But it's addressed to Mr. Schmidt. Technically, it's Mr. Schmidt's bill. His name is on it.
But what it goes on tax roll is mine because I don't buy it. Then that, then that, then that call to be, to.
Bill, Mr. Schmidt?
But we didn't know that you owned it.
Right, I understand that. It's still not my issue.
Counsel? Other discussion? Administration? Gordon had a point. That if there was proven that the deed was filed, and Jeremy brought that in, then it would become an administrative issue to follow the, or, if that's what the council chooses to go with on it.
Is it a law that says I have registered deed? No, it's your, there's. Because if you don't do, there'll be appropriate notices.
Correct.
We'll see. Does it always go the right route?
Do you have something to add, Ed?
I'm, I'm sitting here holding the question, I, I have to ask it. Mr. Butler said he had proof that the property was not out of compliance. If he could show me that, I'd be interested to see.
Well, apparently, we don't know what out of compliance is here. Is it twelve inches, not twelve inches? Is it a, can I sort it?
Yes to all the above.
Six inches of grass might be a case, six inches of fig would be mine, huh?
Sort of that proof, I have no other questions.
Counsel, you have received information from everybody involved and we've got a lengthy agenda. You can hash and hash and hash, but you need to make a decision here. You've heard every side. And if you, if you think you need more information, you have the option of tabling any action till another meeting, pending any information you request. You can take action tonight on his request, or you can take no action at all. Those are your options as we move forward.
Well, I would, I would suggest then that if Jeremy said that he has information or the proofing, bring that to Ed and let us see it and let us work on it next week, next time. Is that all right?
Yep.
Is that okay? Do I need to make that as the motion?
Yep. Along with proof of ownership with the deed? You said you was going to have it next week also?
Gordon, which is?
Your deed, you're going to have it next week, registered?
Gordon, what did you start to say?
You don't need a, you don't need a.
Okay, don't need a motion on?
Consensus here, it's run that.
Okay. Then Jeremy and Ed are going to get together. Okay. Item, business item B, we'll convene our public hearing on resolution two thousand and twelve dash twelve at three oh eight South Sycamore. Ed, turn it over to you as we are in now in that public hearing part of the, per statute.
What we've prepared for you and it's in your counsel packet is a list of dates and events that have happened with this property. It's really only, I think, to remain when it gets down to the bottom, I don't. Certain things have done, this property's been there a long time, since the tornado with, with an omen basin. And we have many in town, and I've stated before that we can only handle a certain amount at any one given time due to funding issues. I'm glad to say that with that last bullet statement in there, that I've been able to work with Ms. Tanya Butler, and she's come to me with, with some plans for how she wants to handle this property and move forward with it. To alleviate the, the dangerous or unsafe conditions so that, you know, kids can't fall into the basement and one can be hurt. Not able to be included in your package is a letter from Ms. Butler that's, that's there on, on the council's bench that provides some direct information from, from Ms. Butler. And if, if you would allow me to, I think I would like to say that I, I would endorse going forward with the plans that Ms. Butler has for alleviating the dangerous condition at that particular property. And I think counsel would handle any questions that would be directly that we can ask Ms. Butler to speak, or, or Mr. Butler, he's here as well.
This is a public hearing for open comment, for anybody that has.
Well, it makes some different points than writing the letter there, that we read that. Because before proceeding, the plans to put a business there, even conditional expense on putting a cop and everything else. You know, my concern is, what are your plans? Because continually, you know, I felt that we have been, we're not able to build a home there. I have waited before. I believe Stan was Bob, who had been here before, who was in charge of some of the things, was unable to kind of agree on my commercial status to build anything there. So before we, we waste our time or anything else, you know, I, I admitted that we had the property appraised. However, I was not aware that the zoning had changed on that property. My predecessor's been out of town for the last week now and will be out until middle of July on a trip to Canada Fish and Water. At that time, you know, there are additional comps and everything else that he needs to be able to give us determination on that. Because of that time, I would like to share even with you, here is what he's worth, reason upon this and say, let him say viable offer if he wants to purchase it. I even spoke with Ed about the possibility of, you know, giving a reasonable offer. Here is an appraisal. We'll take some other there of that appraisal and write that off, say, as a donation to the city, that my husband and I then can even possibly use the taxes. But if we proceed with expense, with expensive plan and everything else, to try and put a business there, you know, I need someone to say, okay, you know, this master plan is not all that, and I would be a blessing to do so instead of possibly just having to fight tooth and nail to get them. That's what we're asking. As far as putting it into, you know, what is the safe structure there and everything else as far as that and what he coats us, absolutely. You know, we're prepared to do that. I'm really not, sometimes it's maybe as much as it seems, trying to get more. But yes, you know, it has done as well to us. I will need to work with the council on that, raise my vote, but, you know, I would like to have a reasonable time for you guys as well to make that decision. So that we know where we can.
And counsel, that's one thing I would suggest as we, after the public hearing's over, is to table the resolution for ninety days and not proceed so the city doesn't have to go through the publishing and everything, and allow you guys time to stay in communications with Ed and, and work together on this. And we appreciate you guys visiting and, and working this out. But that's my suggestion to counsel, because here's good faith effort here to make some progress. I, I would recommend that as we go into, out of this public hearing. I just want that out for what I think ought to be.
One of, one of the topics that Mr. Butler mentioned was potentially selling it to the city. That would take a lot of negotiations to get to the right point. I, I think they have a certain interest in getting the right price, that I think there's been some discussion in the past where that, we may have been at odds on what that right price is. With the idea of, of that contribution being some cash, some gift, assigning a value to a portion of that as the gift, where they still get the benefit out of it, that's a distinct possibility. With the idea of possibly moving forward with, with a, a business venture, it does detract from the green space concept in that block. But I think what can be gained on adding one or two businesses into that area that's not in competition with the big well at all, that would take some good business acumen on, on both entities to be able to, to augment each other instead of being a compet, a, a competition type situation. I think one or two businesses that close to our big well could benefit both entities, really could. I think, I think I'm really appreciative of, of dealing with, with Tanya on this and having her deal with me on it and work with me on some, on some solutions for this. It, it shows really good faith on their part that they want to move forward as well. So I want to thank her publicly for working with me on this, to see if we can move forward on alleviating the, the dangerous basin.
Any other comments during this public hearing? Questions?
Well, I agree. I think that our biggest concern is just getting that secure now that we've got so many people showing up at the Big Well, you know, just for safety issues. I agree with you 100% Tanya. I mean, that's an excellent location for a business. If, you know, that's the way you want to go. You know, you're not going to get more traffic than across from the Big Well. So that's something that you do need to consider. And the green space idea, you know, that plan was almost five years old now. And it is a living document. It's not set in stone.
Our contribution to the rest of that is the cost for us to put the concrete top on the basement is approximately between $8,000 and $10,000 of our cost. So you can see where I'm saying I'm cautious or you're what? As much as I would like to have a business and everything else, this is my way of saying, you know, if we have any discussion between, are we going to allow, because us using the $10,000 to put a concrete top on that just to be in compliance? And in the future, if we still allow the option of putting a business there or something else, would be absolutely a waste of our patent. So that's where I would like to communicate with you on the other notes to say, you know, what are your intentions? And why we discuss that so that we know where we stand. And I know even Bob and I discussed this. Goodness, what a happy time. I had these intentions for quite some time and the wall was just entirely too high to climb every single time. So I'm saying if, if this is an option, then please let us conduct. Otherwise, you know, then we need to, you know, another way to do something here.
Ed, just a question as far as the, you mentioned it's zoned as commercials. Is that the same commercial zoning as is in the Main Street corridor and therefore would be subject to, any construction would be subject to approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I believe it's zoned the same as the Main Street area.
Yeah, it's downtown commercial. And so they would have similar, will they have the same requirements to bring down the business? And yeah, they would have, they would go to the planning commission with a plan review. And what I would say too is the Wind Reeds now had tried to have their location changed into commercial. We had a letter notifying us that they had such a hearing for that. And I did not go. It was not going to be, but they additionally got conditional use. But my property, I had never gotten sent a notice. And it was residential. And apparently now without notice or anything else, it had been changed to commercial. So I'm kind of wondering, how did that occur? When actually we should have had the option to stay here?
For the conditional use, you have to notify the property owner for 200 feet. So that's why the property owners got notified on their request. And when you do an overall change to the zoning map, the notice does not go to every single property in the city or in that surrounding area. It goes in the newspaper that there's going to be a public hearing on it. It's just a different state. It's actually a different ruling on how notices go out for those type of topics. So there was a notice in the newspaper. But if you weren't looking for it, you may not have seen it. It would have been classified. That's where the public notices were listed. So that's the difference. The conditional use requires specific notification to the neighboring property owner. And when you do an overall zoning change, which is what happened in your case, you know, notice to the neighboring owner. You notice the whole town are putting in a different building.
Has that been recently, Krista?
No. No, that's been the rule. No, I don't know.
But it has changed?
Yeah, earlier recently. If I know that my acreage did even, you know, everything was still residential. So that's why I was... They changed that last year when they updated the zoning codes. There was a zoning map change as well to include that. So that would have been probably about a year ago. Since that's a commercial, can make the residential in the basement and have residences above it like Eric and us so they could actually go ahead and put concrete top on and live in it? Or make a apartment on it?
Okay. Ed?
I think Ms. Butler is looking for some type of a show of support on an idea to invest $8,000 to $10,000. I think it may show that if we're able to do that and the counsel can agree that that is a proper use for that, then they will feel more comfortable to invest that kind of money to put the top on that foundation. So I guess the key question at this point in my mind is, green space or can we allow a business on Sycamore Street?
I think we want to...
We're zoned commercial.
Yeah, I would be open to it. But as my question about the Planning and Zoning Commission is that, again, they will have a same as well as far as recommendation. But again, I guess the final determination ultimately would apply to the counsel. So, but I would say...
That's why my recommendation is to just table it for 90 days and get some answers and communicate. And that's the great thing that started the last two weeks is this communications. And Ed and Tanya, thank you for initiating that. And that's why I think that's what you as counsel need to do.
I agree with that.
Any other comments on the public hearing? And that allows us to answer some of these questions in 90 days.
It gives them time to explore some of their ideas that they have with it also.
Without having this resolution over the top of both parties.
I would agree with that.
Any other comments in the public hearing? If not, public hearing is adjourned. Now, counsel, I would entertain action on this resolution. In what manner you decide?
I would make a motion to table Resolution 2012-12 to give city staff time to work with property owner to address the property to both party satisfaction.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to table this for 90 days. Resolution 2012-12. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Should I abstain?
No.
No? You can vote yes or no. Was it, all in favor? If you abstain, it's a no vote. Motion carried. Motion carried. We'll open the public hearing on 221 West Colfax. Counsel, this will be consideration of Resolution 2012-12 now because we've tabled 2012 at 308 to keep our numbers in correct order so we don't have phantom number out there. Comments, questions during, I call the public hearing to order on 221 West Colfax. Administration?
Counsel, if I may, the same type of document, breaking out the different gates and ponds, staff has examined this address, 221 West Colfax. Kind of paints the picture that we've been examining this property this is primarily since I've arrived here in Greensburg from April till now. Attempts to reach the registered owner have been unsuccessful. As you'll notice from the black and white photos, there are a lot of issues here. There's the need for a weed notice. There's the basement located on the property as well as a couple of other issues we're working on with this property. But this public hearing portion of the counsel meeting is to decide what to do with this basement foundation. And as I said, we haven't had any contact with any registered owner for them to provide us any kind of a plan on what they want to see happen with this property. So I would suggest that counsel move forward and consider the abandonment process on this property.
Did note, the registered owner has not contacted you in any way. Correct? Am I understanding that?
You've had no contact.
Counsel, any questions? This is a public hearing, so audience, you have, the public has every right to comment on these. Hearing, no other comments. Adjourn the public hearing part of 221 West Colfax. And now, counsel, then your consideration to proceed with Resolution 2012-13 at 221 West Colfax or -12 at 221 West Colfax.
I would move that we accept Resolution Number 2012-12.
Second.
Give you a timeframe is what you mean?
We need a timeframe attached to that resolution.
30 days?
What has been our administration? What's been our past history on that? Or is it just councils randomly chose a date?
I think it just depends on circumstances there. Sometimes it's going to take 90 days or whatever for somebody to get a contract to do something or whatever. And you give them more time. This situation is very simple. Take care. They would. You can cut that time down. And I would also need to, I mean, I don't think we have actual contact with this person, but we're going to be publication notes here. So why don't sort of give time to that back? And we have to send that also. 30 to 60 days if you need to.
They have a tendency to not sign for notices from us. So we mailed the first class also, and that has not returned. The certified letter, that they didn't sign for, but they didn't return the first class. So we didn't make more than one contact.
So what's your recommendation, 30 days or 60?
60.
I would make the recommendation for 60 to remove all doubt. If we move forward quickly on a process that the owner just had a little more time, they could do it. They've been made aware of this, as Krista said, with the first class mail. I would suggest 60 days.
If I understand, Erica made the motion. I remember right, so would you want to amend your motion to?
I will amend my motion and add that the structures and weeds be removed on or before the fourth day of September 2012.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion or questions on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item D, we do not need a public hearing on 221 West Garfield. It has been taken care of and is in compliance now. Correct?
That's correct. No further actions on it. Since we began the process, we had notified counsel. Wanted it on the agenda just to be able to close out that issue and let counsel know that it has been by the owner.
Item E, consideration approval of letter of intent with City of Greensburg, Gigawatt Investment Group, which Greensburg Crystaline is part of along with several others in your documentation. Ed's been in close contact with Mr. Greg Schoonover and Troy Hafner. And both of them have visited extensively with Ed and I on their plans. And so I'll turn it over to you, Ed.
Thank you. This is kind of an exciting time. In working with Greg and Troy and others, we're very close in their process of being able to finalize their financial arrangements to be able to begin the process that they've worked so hard for the last year and a half or two years on. I will point out to counsel, however, that we've given you an updated copy of letter of intent and made the necessary changes on the lease agreement that will be discussed after this item. Mr. Greg Schoonover has talked to me after dealing with his financial consultants. He needs this Greensburg letter of intent to reflect the Gigawatt Investment Group. That's a requirement that he's being educated on, being briefed on in the financial process to have this, say, Gigawatt Investment Group rather than simply Greensburg Crystaline. So with your forbearance, counsel, I will just tell you that's why we changed that. That's the primary reason to change the letter of intent at this time is to have the Gigawatt Investment Group on there and have that match the potential lease document that would be the next agenda item. Additionally, on paragraph one, in order to assist Gigawatt Investment Group and Greensburg Solar, et cetera, to finalize their financing, it was necessary to increase the length of that initial lease term from 20 years to 30 so that they could show that they had better control over that property for a longer timeframe to help finalize their finance. The paragraph one, the first bullet point under there, I've changed that because as your copy will show, it says the initial term of 30 years at the rent of $1 per year for the first 20 years. That kind of left the question hanging out there, what to do with the last 10-year portion of that. So I've just added the verbiage there and I've checked with counsel on that. It just kind of provides the information that for that last portion of the 30-year lease, they would be paying the lease payment at the fair market value the same way as they would for any of the additional extension periods on their lease. So having said that, it captures those two primary changes to this letter, this letter of intent. So this is very similar to other letters of intent that we provided except that right now in visiting Mr. Schoonover and Mr. Hafner, we're very close on this process. So this assists them with documentation they need to move forward and finalize their budget.
And counsel, just information. We've had very great discussions starting on Friday and really are on the same page on this with Greg and Troy. And as we have been all along, it's just walking through the, getting it all in line for everybody. They've got their end in line and this... We need to consider that letter of intent? No, we need to accept?
I would move that we approve the letter of intent between the City of Greensburg and Greensburg Crystaline.
Check it.
Can I amend that by saying Gigawatt?
Sorry. Gigawatt.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Matt, you had an addition to the agenda here.
Yeah, request that we have a quick executive session for attorney-client, probably no more than 15 minutes. So I would move that we go into executive session for attorney-client until 7:25.
Check it. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye? Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We'll be back 7:25. We're back in open session. Gordon, go ahead.
We've had a discussion with the President of the Gigawatt Department and the proposal round base. And the, what we thought on the investment, there are enough changes that I don't want to do it like this with, through intermediation. to do it like this, through intermediation initially, that we can change, make the changes tomorrow, but the council can, you reviewed it already, and so we can discuss proposed changes now, and you can make books to approve the contract with those changes if you want or not, and then authorize the mayor to sign them and document those changes in tomorrow, and their final ability that way, because we have the rights. So I thought you have to talk about the changes we talked about, or some of it were blanks in there anyway, some of it was just purely in the blanks. But on the first page, is that okay to go that way?
Yeah, let's just go through it, and that way, you guys had your good discussion.
The, on the first page is, the date of the lease would be today's date, July 2nd, 2002. The draft was with Greensburg Crystaline, Kansas LLC, which is a Kansas entity, that they want to have also, kind of consistent with the letter of intent, they want Greensburg Solar LLC and Gigawatt Investment Group, payable stock company companies, but they want those to have as party receipts. There, we will have a physical address, I think it's, what is it?
One hundred South Cottonwood.
One hundred South, not. One hundred South Cottonwood, I think they're-
South what?
Cottonwood.
Cottonwood, okay.
Greensburg, and then on the, in section two, the term, initial three-year term of lease is from July 2nd, 2012, July 1, 2042. Then there's a change on page four, the, let's see, maybe we change all their names, but I think Oklahoma Hall is the resident agent, and we're going to use the same address as page one for the business, not, not his own, not Oklahoma's address.
So that just changed to one hundred South Cottonwood.
Right, South Cottonwood, correct. To address the issue that we talked about in terms of what kind of facility is going to be furnished with the industrial park maintenance process, we've gone out by section 15, in paragraph A, at the end of the first sentence, which talks about their requirement for them to provide plans and specifications. The sentence will be added, to the effect of, I did change this a little bit, but the substance I'm going to say, and that is that the cost of construction of buildings will be at least ten million dollars to the last sentence. So we've quantified the obligation of what the city's getting with this. On page eleven, this is a call on section twenty, discussion of establishing rental for a post-thirty-year period or post-twenty-year period, and it would be, we're going to go to the previous term, rather than the original term, which is a dollar.
Just verbiage? Just getting the verbiage?
Yeah, just getting the verbiage. I think that is the last of the major things that I stand on. And we would have some, the signature pages would obviously have to be modified to grant those initial, and then we could submit, like Eli already did, and then email it over for everybody who had here in the city.
Greg? Do you have any, is that reflective of what you guys talked about? Okay, good. Okay. Gordon, anything else on that? Counsel, questions? Ed?
I will point out, since council has taken action previously to approve the letter of intent, I would like to have the letter of intent modified to match this lease document exactly. On the, on the letter of intent, remove St. James Metal Works and Concepts and Power from the new letter of intent that I provided to council. Then to match any stuff from that.
Gordon, can we do that all in this one motion?
Yeah, that could actually-
Okay, if that's what the council chooses to do, okay. So you're suggesting then that the motion be to modify what we said and eliminate the St. James Metal Works and Concepts and Power from the LOI that reflects then the lease, then also in that motion, you're suggesting that if the council considers this, that reword what you said?
The approval, the ground lease subject to the changes that we discussed here, we compared with by a year.
Okay. And then authorize the mayor to sign. With those changes made?
Writing that down, Mark?
Questions, counsel?
I would make that motion that Bob just said. Concerning the letter of intent, with the changes made on it and with the lease agreement, with the changes approved on it, or made on it, modified, with modifications, Ed?
And authority to sign.
And authorizing the mayor to sign it upon approval of these modifications.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in, any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Gordon, if you'll, when you get that, give it over to Ed and I, and we'll get that. Greg and Troy will get that to you as quick as Gordon gets those corrections made in the morning.
Let's see, actually, we should do some, we're not too worried about that, we have a lot of new ones.
Well, we just enjoy working with you guys, and this has been quite a ride in the process, and we look forward to our continued-
Well, I was getting trouble, what I'd say about that, and I think more on board.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, sure. Okay. Next on the agenda is the discussion of the privately-owned hangars at the industrial park, Ed?
For this agenda item, the city clerk and I have been in contact with Kent Caldwell, USDA, he's communicated through Christie to me that they're quite interested in moving forward and closing out the airport hangar, the business park project. There is funding that remains for the business park, but that is limited in its use, it has to be used for either, either and/or demolishing the buildings, working the ground, or the dirt work, possibly use it to help run a gas line out to the business park. But the funding needs to be used so that the USDA can close their portion of this project, to the business park. With that in mind, I'd like to have council consider moving forward, consider an offer to the airport hangars. I think to remind council of what those options are, as we've discussed before with the city attorney's help and in open meetings, we don't have an obligation to pay them. The leases are quite clear that once, once the leases have expired, they have the option to either relinquish that building to the city or to move the building somewhere else. But in this case, nearly all of those leases are expired, so to call in that option, we can say simply, it's your building, you have the opportunity to move it. I would suggest, however, to have some type of medium ground there. I've asked Mrs. Hamreves or treasurer to prepare a document for council that, that gives you some numbers to put to the county appraisal about it. And then a couple of different columns there that say, well, if you don't personally feel that's high enough, you can increase it by ten or twenty percent. I would suggest that if we've tried to go any higher than that, I don't believe we have money to just throw at this project. I think it's a feel-good sense to be able to offer them the county appraised value and possibly go up from there. But at least it puts us on a feel to be able to offer them something of value for what they feel they have of value remaining out there. So having said that, I think what would need to happen is that our city attorney could work with me, and we could draft a letter, first of all notifying people formally that the leases are expired, and the city force does not intend to renew those leases. And then make an offer, a monetary offer if the council so chooses, to be able to give them some value for their received value in their hangar. We've been given that deadline of, not a deadline, a request by USDA that we close out this business park project by September 30th. So it's important to take some type of action.
What type of funds do we still have available?
Just over thirty-seven thousand. That's on the remaining funds for the business park project.
But we can't use those for purchase of the hangars?
Certainly can't, and we've asked, but the answer is no.
We can use it for demolition and preparation.
Demolition, preparation of the ground, possibly for the gas line as well, to help get that infrastructure to the business park, but certainly not for free, funds to pay for the buildings.
So do we have the funds to pay these appraisal values?
Well, the funds are available, for example, in our insurance line.
Okay.
Which I think is a dwindling amount of money, we have to manage that. This is an important project, the business park. The actions that we've taken tonight to move forward with the ground lease shows us at this point how important that ground is. So time is of the essence.
I think you and Gordon ought to get together and form that letter and use the appraised value figure to start with.
Agreed.
I mean, we don't want the hangars, we don't want to buy them for our use or whatever, but they're holding up possible progress also if we don't finish it.
Really, most of the buildings, the ten percent would be a more accurate appraisal than that.
Would agree with that.
He said that, Christie, I didn't.
So I'm understanding you're thinking that we give them their thirty-day notice?
Certainly.
And then offer after thirty days that they can either move it?
Or we'll offer you the appraised value.
Or you're just going to offer them the appraised value right off the bat?
No, I would give them the option to move it, because I think there was one person that had asked questions about moving it. That's another option that you can put with it.
The stated cost from that particular building owner exceeds what the appraised value is, the cost of moving the building.
I understand.
But it would, it would offer some attempt at assisting them with this money to help them move the building should they choose to. I might suggest also that with any discussion on this, we consider that thirty-day notice that the buildings will not be renewed on lease, to maybe make acceptance of the offer contingent on, in a timely acceptance of the offer, rather than, rather than waiting six months and then attempting to do this. We need to move forward and close out this project or risk losing the funds that have been made available through USDA.
I understand.
So a letter to the building owners, an offer of an amount of money based on the appraised value, that dollar figure to be accepted within the thirty-day timeframe or the offer is rescinded.
And the building be removed.
Because the building needs to come down after that.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that. Do we need a motion?
Well, yes, we need a motion for direction, if that's what council wants, we need it in the minutes. This was started as a discussion item, but if you want to specifically give the administration and the council direction-
Well, I agree with that, I feel like we need to quit stirring the water and move on with it. I would make that motion that we instruct our city administrator to work with our city attorney on forming a letter, offering these people thirty days to decide whether they would be interested in appraised value or not, or accepting our offer.
The county appraised value.
The county appraised value.
To be clear on that, on the document I provided council, the column on the left,
Was there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Alls in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Business item H, I visited with the city administrator the other day, and I suggested to Ed that when Wes Jury's here for his presentation for the Center of Innovation, that we be in a regular meeting, that that needs to be a special meeting. That way it is open, we're very clear that it's a special meeting and it is a public meeting, and that way also if the council decides to take any action that night, we are, we can do that. So I'm requesting that we call July the 12th at six o'clock in the evening in council chambers as a special council meeting. That's what I would like to request.
I would make a motion that we call a special council meeting for July 12th, 6:00 PM, for the purpose of meeting with the Center for Innovation to consider a partnership with said organization.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item I, the July 10th budget work session.
Counsel, I'm asking you to consider moving that to the Sunships Business Incubator for a couple of reasons. I think that less formal atmosphere sitting around a table would be more conducive to briefing council on the budget and to receive input from council as well. No other topic on that, I think it's just a more conducive environment, I think we can get a lot more accomplished.
And then the budget work session that we're going to have after our special meeting on the 12th will be here?
That's correct.
Correct.
Should we need additional time after the 10th, we can conduct that after the close of the special council.
Motion. No, 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 we're way down, we haven't, we're still formulating all that before we have our public hearing on the budget, you have to have a public hearing on the budget before we ever take action for approval. We're down the road on that, another month, and it has to be published by mid-August somewhere, I don't know the dates off the top of my head, but we're just, this is the start of the process. So counsel, let's just have a quick motion that we're going to move, so it's in the public record, the minutes that we're going to have the work session at the Sunships Incubator on the 10th.
I would make a motion that we're going to move the July 10th budget work session from the city council chambers to the Business Incubator.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Second agenda addition, Ed, with Linda and Wes and you, and we've all discussed, go ahead.
Counsel, on this additional information that was sent to you, we didn't have enough time to put it into the regular agenda, so we asked you, will you receive this email and receive this document? To just be aware, we're going to add it. This is primarily an item to ask for council's permission to have the mayor sign a letter of support, so that the Center of Innovation can include us in the process. can include us in the process for the Advanced Manufacturing Jobs and Innovation Accelerator Challenge Grant. Now, this is, as you'll see from the synopsis sheet, this is a grant that's going to be made from several different entities of the, of the government, US Department of Defense, Department of Agriculture, and other branches of the government. But this grant is for the Center of Innovation to apply for 2.1, 2,192,000, 2.1, almost 2.2 million dollars, to work on the area of unmanned aerial systems consortium, for which we will be a member at that point, once we sign the letter of support. The recipient of the grant will be the Center for Innovation. With us being a member of that grant process, the initial stages of which we'll, we'll see data collection in our area. We'll be collecting data on what our infrastructure is, where our potential workforce is, where businesses could, could have a spot to call home, which we have room in the business park. But the initial stages of that are to gather the information to see what shortcomings we have that can be assisted by the workforce planning, et cetera, to make us more marketable to be a part of this unmanned aerial systems consortium. I, I hope you had a chance to look at this long grant form. It's 84 pages, but it just documents what all the requirements are that the Center for Innovation has to document, we wanted to submit for this. And this is when Linda Garcia at the Center for Innovation told me that she wanted to include Greensburg as a part of this grant process, she told me that they would be writing the grant and asking us for some supporting information. After looking at the 84-page document, I'm glad she's writing it. It looks very lengthy. This is an in-kind grant process, which as you'll notice after my visiting with Linda on the phone, what I've put in there is that our in-kind contribution over a three-year period for this grant process will be 360 hours, at roughly a hundred dollars per hour, for a total in-kind contribution of 36,000, which I think is, is roughly what the City of Enid is contributing on their portion of this UAS consortium grant. My concern in talking to Linda was that, I had to tell her, we, we haven't even approved our partnership agreement with the center at that point. Are, are you okay with us moving forward? And she says that the partnership agreement has nothing to do with this unmanned aerial systems consortium. We're in it. If we authorize as a city for our mayor to sign this document, we are part of that grant process. There's going, going to be, oh, remind you, since there's so much material here, there's going to be 12 awards from this grant program with the Center for Innovation being one of those 12. This is something that I think is, it kind of follows through on what counsel asked on, on our first discussions about the Center for Innovation. What do we get for this? Well, immediately, we're going to have the opportunity to take part in the unmanned aerial system grant process. And there are other grants that I've discussed with them that we're going to be able to hopefully move forward with as well. Now, whether we get to move forward and take part in those grants, not being a member of the, of the Center for Innovation, I don't know the answer to that. All I can tell you with 100% surety is that we are in this grant process if you so choose to write the letter of support.
So to clarify, the 360 hours that we're contributing, it's just the hours that we're contributing, not the 36,000 dollars?
That's correct. However, I will say, when you start adding up that in-kind contribution, which is a requirement from the federal agencies, they want to, if nothing else, gauge the level of interest from the different members of this consortium. Being able to say, I am contributing this in-kind reflects that we don't want to just sit back and receive something. We want to be an active partner in this process as well. So if, as the mayor continues to work on this process, Christie, myself, each one of those contributions can add up to the in-kind. If we have a meeting to attend in Wichita, whether it's overnight or not, those types of expenditures can also add up to that in-kind contribution. It's not money you're directly contributing, but it is either a time or a gasoline expense to be able to show we're an active member of this, this unmanned aerial systems consortium.
And we have to document those hours and expenditures?
Yes. And I'm, I'm prepared to do that.
Do you want the corrections that need to be made on the letter?
Certainly. I, I think I saw some today.
Please do.
I'm not catching any.
Uh, second line, it's the US Department of Commerce, not the UD.
Sorry.
As you're going through those next lines, I believe you can strike all of the "the" because it's, it's the US Department of Energy, not the US Department of Energy. And five lines down after ETA emphasis, which should be a comma after the "and."
Excuse me, are you, oh yeah, you're still in the first paragraph.
Yes. And the second paragraph, seven lines down, middle of the line there, should be leaning on our strong agricultural tradition.
That's why we like to call these items.
I had a couple. On the next page.
Good.
I think the last line, the first paragraph, A, I perform a high, maybe six degrees. And then the next paragraph, I think it would be, as you say, in summary, the city fully supports.
Yeah. Yeah, to change that instead of that the city of Greensburg fully supports us.
Good, thank you.
Need a motion?
Authorization for you to sign it, all the corrections. If that's correct.
I would move that we authorize Mr., or our, excuse me, that we authorize our mayor to sign this letter of intent. Is that letter of intent?
Letter of support.
Letter of support, excuse me.
With the corrections.
With the corrections, yes.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Mr. Stall, do you have anything for us?
Not anymore.
Any other executive sessions tonight? Is there anything else to come before us this evening, counsel? When you're aware.
Curiosity, what caused haul off the fire station floor?
What was that?
Speak up, Rex. We can't hear you down here.
Haul off the fire station floor. Tell them now, put a bastion on, go up and keep it. Because I knew that was the bill.
I have not seen the actual bill for the cement slab that was removed across from City Hall. I expect it to be over 2,000 pounds. We had approximately, I think, greater than 40 loads of cement.
Other thing is, are we keeping up with our water rights at the well? Does it come so often that it needs to be wrote down and checked and, or we'll lose our water rights?
Well number eight?
No.
Big well?
That is an open well. They could, sometimes they can make you cover a well. They can make you.
Capping.
Capping.
It's an excellent point. I'll look into that. I'll get you the answer.
Do we need to form us a little committee on this weed ordinance? It's been an ongoing battle for the last 50 years between maybe your code enforcement officer, some master gardeners.
Tree board?
Tree board. You know, get us a little five or six member board, see if we can rewrite that if something is doable.
There are some identified changes that I'd like to consider on that. For example, the latest League of Kansas Municipalities sample weed notice includes pervage to the effect that, we're talking weeds, it has nothing to do with decorative grasses. If you're purchasing grass that's, in essence, designed to be a decorative grass and it exceeds 12 inches, much like what we have in the city building, I think any modifications or changes to a weed ordinance should include something about decorative grasses. I, I think that's an excellent idea. I can, I can see about putting something together. If I may, I'd like to go back and address the first topic. You hit me with those relatively quickly. Thank you for the comments on the big well. I'll look into that. The cement slab, I felt it was important since it was designed as a green space across from City Hall and we're beginning or continuing a baking process, it's all cement, it's underground basements, things of this nature. I felt it important, if we began that process, to complete it in a timely fashion so that we as a city are showing our residents of town that if we're asking you to do something, we're not above doing that ourselves. So when we started that process, I had an indication that it would be expensive because what we paid for the small shed slab, it was directly to the west of the large slab. We began that process and it was important to finish it, so.
It didn't have that tiny bit of rebar on it, huh?
It had about three foot below ground wall and quite a bit of rebar. So it was a mess, but it's been completed and it was completed very well. Good time to finish by, by our city crews, but it, it, you'll see it on the list, it'll, it'll be in excess of two grand.
Ed, Rex did bring something up and I know on the tree board, you mentioned the tree board area. There are several master gardeners on that tree board too, so to have, if you want to pull in an advisory committee, you and Gordon are something to look and if you want a council member or two, two preferably, to, to look at it if it's, just to get some opinions by more than just one or two people. Is this a, I mean, I'm not in favor of just changing an ordinance to change an ordinance, meaning, or code. If it's problematic, we'll address it. If it's just inconvenient for me, then is it best for everybody? Okay, but if, if we need to look at it, let's look at it. Okay? I have no problem with that, but I just don't want to see knee-jerking. The state does that and we had 200 and some new laws went into effect yesterday.
Yes.
Yes. And, and all I'm saying is, just, is, does that make things better? But if you don't look at it, you don't know if you can make them better. So that's all my comment is on that. In other words, we trust, we support you, but don't just knee-jerk on it just because.
I think if he want, if you, if you think it needs to be a direct.
Pulling, pull, pull the tree board and the council member to it.
You don't want me riding around with people's laws. I'll figure him out.
Anything else to come before us tonight?
Meeting or jerking.
Thank you, everyone.